Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Okay, the June 25th School Board Work Session Enclosed Meeting. Let's go ahead and do a roll call. Dr. Noonan?
Yep, Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Gould.
Here.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Murphy.
Here.
Ms. Silverman.
Here.
And Ms. Dux.
Here.
Thank you, and let's go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, now we're at 1.04, Adoption of the Agenda. Can I please have a motion for 1.04? Mr. Jared?
I move that the board adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Jared, do I have a second? Thank you, Amy. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, abstentions? All right, adoption of agenda passes. And now we are going to move on to the work session for the School Board Advisory Committee and school-affiliated organization written reports to the school board. And just to remind the community about this process, we have a number of critical community-led communities. They work throughout the year and they have their own committee members. We have the chairs represented by some of the committees here. These are school board advisory committees, and this is a critical part of our job to make sure that we have a connection to the issues, the concerns, and that's... And so tonight, we've asked the chairs to come and speak on behalf of the work that's been done this year, make recommendations, and to make sure they plant the seeds for next year about where these committees should be going, where the work should be. And so we're very appreciative of them not just being here tonight, but all the work they do to lead these meetings. And we have the FCCPS staff that are also part of this. We have school board liaisons. It's a major effort, and the chairs have to keep all of these trains on the track. And we are very appreciative of all the work and the connection and the communication that we have. So what we'd like to do is actually, since we have three seats, we're going to actually ask all the chairs to just move up a space, if you don't mind, and join us. And we don't have an order for this. So we will start... Yep, we will start with Dr. Gillespie, who is the Chair of the Special Education Committee. And we appreciate your attendance. You just had to hit the green button, or the button to make it green.
All right. My name is Kathy Gillespie, and I am the Chair of the Special Education Advisory Committee. I have been in that position now for a full 12 months, and am planning to serve in the same capacity next year. I just want to hit a couple of highlights from the report that I sent because we've had a very busy year. But I think the three things that I'm most proud of and would like for you to know about, first of all, we have worked a lot on setting a charge that focuses on the students, the staff, and the families who participate in our special education programs in Falls Church. And we especially focused on staff at this... In addition to families, we've been doing a lot for families, but we focused on staff this year and have started doing some appreciation events for our special education teams, and we plan on expanding those in the coming year. I think the second thing that I'm super proud of is that we entertained an incredible amount of public comment this year, which I understand is different than what this committee has experienced in the past. And I feel like our committee heard what was said, decided that there were things that we needed to discuss further, and then we took action based on the things that we heard and on our discussion, which resulted in the third thing, which was the letter that we sent to you all, resulting, you know, about the concerns with the student assignment piece at Oak Street this year. And we really appreciate your response to that letter, to the actions that were taken as a response of that letter. But next year, we plan to continue. What we're hoping to do is to be more active in the review of the policies that affect the special education program, of course, continue to do the things that we are legislatively mandated to do as a committee, and to really continue to expand our support of families and students and staff in special education.
Questions, comments for Kathy and the Special Ed Committee?
Question, thank you Kathy for all the work and all the leadership and all the updates on the work that you all have done with Ms. Sharp as well. Questions, comments from the school board to Kathy on the work that they have done with the Special Ed Committee?
Hello, I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you. I miss being the liaison to that committee. We overlapped for just a little, just a few months. But it was really, really wonderful to see your leadership on the committee and how hard the committee was working and how committed the committee was to making sure, like you said, being responsive to the community and being respectful and appreciative of the staff. I think that can be like a... There's a natural tension sometimes, especially with more vulnerable populations. And I just think you really... Your leadership and the committee's work this last year just really did a beautiful job sort of threading that needle and making sure that you had like a really balanced and comprehensive approach to your service. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Yes, Amy?
I won't repeat exactly what Kathleen so eloquently said, but I, as the school board liaison to this committee, I just want to say what a joy it's been to be a part of it for the past couple of months. Everyone is... It just... It functions so seamlessly, and everyone is so respectful of one another, and there's been some really great discussions. So I look forward to being a part of it next year.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Amy. Other questions or comments?
Me again. I almost forgot to thank Ms. Sharp also. Thank you so much. It would not be as successful and as thriving a committee without your stewardship as well. Thank you.
That was going to be my final comment to say thank you to Rebecca as well. We make a really good team, I think, and we've been able to have some very honest and good and deep and sometimes difficult conversations about what we need to do. And I appreciate that partnership immensely, so.
All right. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate Kathy. Now we're going to move on to the Health and Wellness. Allison Stevens, I don't know if there's been much activity this year with Health and Wellness, but hopefully we'll hear about something that's been going on, so. Yes.
There you go, okay.
All right, thank you, Alice.
Hi, everyone. I'm Allison Stevens. I'm stepping in for Komal Baza Smith, who could not make it tonight. I'm a member of the committee and incoming chair, so look forward to working with all of you in this coming year. I'm also just... I'm going to go off some of our notes from the committee, so please forgive me for doing a little reading. So we had a very productive year this year. We covered a wide range of topics, including substance use, mindfulness programming, biking and walking to school, recess time and digital use policies in schools. A lot of the conversation centered on the latter two, recess time and screen time. For recess time, the committee is urging the school board to develop clear policies around outdoor recess. As the report notes, the committee recommends indoor recess only at temperatures below 32 degrees and above 99 degrees if air quality is code red and during extreme or hazardous weather. Otherwise, the committee recommends outdoor recess. And further, the committee recommends that recess shouldn't be withheld for incomplete work or behavioral reasons, and indoor recess should encourage active movement, and video should be limited. As far as digital use programming, the current... The committee recommends that the school board develop guidelines around cellphone use on the secondary campus, which is currently, our understanding is left to the discretion of teachers. And the committee urges the school board to develop guidelines around screen use at the secondary level that align with guidelines at the middle school level. So the committee members did a lot of work this year on that topic. Just a few highlights, we started out the year with a session with principals' lob and pickering on just having an open discussion on screen use and just sort of learning about policies and sort of answering questions from the parent community. We held two trainings in conjunction with the administration to help parents use securely, which is a new tool to... That embeds safety and tracking features into school-issued devices. The school also screened The Social Dilemma, which is a documentary around screen use at the secondary campus, and we developed a set of surveys that we hope to field in the not-too-distant future. So this summer and the next school year, the committee is urging the school board to consider guidelines to... That will... We were... Sorry, the committee will continue to sort of... Continue its work to raise awareness around the issue, and also urge the school board to implement solutions such as central storage areas or magnetic pouches to help restrict access to cellphone use during the school day. And that is all, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Stevens, for all your help, your leadership. Lori?
Thank you, and... I think I'm on now, thank you. And again, I've also only been on this committee for a couple of months, but it's been a great working group. I think we come with a lot of very different ideas, a lot of collaboration, and I have really high hopes that this committee will be able to do really great things in the future.
Thank you, Lori. Yeah, just to echo that, I know there's a lot of activity. Health and Wellness covers a lot of different areas and aspects of a student's experience. So I know it can be overwhelming, I imagine, for all the topics and issues that you all are not just fielding, but also fielding from the community. So we definitely appreciate you collating and trying to take a leadership role in that and helping us with the recommendations on that, so it's been really great. So especially a year ago, I think you were off to the sideline, and now you're...
That's right, yes.
So now you're in the leadership role, so we appreciate you stepping up. So thank you, Allison, so. Other questions or comments for Ms. Stevens on this, or the committee? Yep?
Again, I just wanted to say thank you. I also feel like I... I know at least for me, and I imagine for the rest of the board, I've just learned a lot from their... From your committee's recommendations and how thoughtful the work is and how comprehensive you try and be, and how seriously you take it when you do make a recommendation. The committee, I know I've seen, again, I was liaison to that committee for my first two years, and it was wonderful to see how thoughtful and hardworking the committee was. And we've just learned a lot from your work. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's impacted our decisions as well, in terms of the policy, in terms of the start times, and obviously that came from the committee itself, which kicked off a large community conversation, so we appreciate the effort on that, so. Yeah. Oh, oh, sorry, Dr. Noonan?
No, no, that's fine. Since we have you here, we are in the process of working on a regulation around recess right now. And I got the... I actually got the first draft today, and I want to run these temperatures by you because these seem pretty extreme to me.
Okay.
And it was 20 degrees Fahrenheit. And is that too cold? And then 100 degrees would be the number to stay in. I don't want to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I hate to be on the spot, too, and I might defer to our committee member, Jen Beck. I don't know if you know Jen, but as a health professional, she has led this particular effort. Temps... Yeah, so I guess I wouldn't say...
Yeah, maybe we'll check in with her then. We have looked at a variety of different regulations from around the region, and 20 degrees seems to be sort of almost the standard.
Okay.
So it's really interesting, but that seems really cold. Thanks.
It's... Yes, yeah, it seems cold, too, but...
Lori?
Just to comment on that, as a Chicagoan, we were sent outside. If it was negative... If it was zero or above, we just had to bundle up. So 20 degrees is a nice warm day in Chicago.
I'm also from the Chicago area, and my... I think my blood has thinned since I moved away. But I... But I... We just... We hardly had snow days at all just because almost every day during the winter would be shut down if we did.
Great. Thank you, and in terms of the two recommendations, obviously, we're working on one of the recommendations, and then the other one, we're going to be having a conversation tonight about the technologies in schools. So again, that direct connection of the committee's work and the board and how we're engaging is a great partnership, so thank you very much, so.
Well, thank you very much.
All right, Connie, you are up next. I was going to say the Gifted and Talented Committee, but I think there's some changes underway that you're going to be talking about. So Connie, we appreciate your leadership and let you take it from here.
Sure, thank you. So I'm Connie Ryberg. I'm the Chair of what is currently called the Gifted Education Advisory Committee, but yes, we have a discussion about that. So the committee met five times this year. And at the beginning, at our first meeting, we set some objectives for the year and created some subcommittees so that we were making progress on different things in between those five meetings. So going down, you know, and really creating, I think, some longer-term goals for the committee that are not just a one-year, but probably a multi-year effort. So going into the highlights for the year, I think our first highlight was really a deeper dive into the Advanced Academic Services at MEH. And Steve Pickering and Susan Deal came in and gave a presentation to the committee around what those services are. And we had a really nice dialogue with them around those services and the community's understanding of them. And I think what we realized was the community has a pretty good understanding of the math and the English language opportunities at MEH, but the flex time advanced academics was not as well-understood. So we continued that dialogue and came up with some communication strategies that were implemented in the second half of the school year and with a lot of very positive feedback to those, that additional communication. So we definitely appreciate their willingness to have that dialogue and that discussion. Another highlight for the year was a focus, or beginning this year, is a focus on what's called 2E, or twice exceptional learners. And we created a joint committee with the Special Education Committee, really to look at the special needs of that group that is not always well-understood. So that committee is formed, and they're getting together. And right now, the goal is to look at what resources are available for various stakeholders of 2E learners. And any students who are listening, you're not the only ones who have requested reading over the summer. We've requested the members of that subcommittee to read a book about 2E learners and come back in the fall, hopefully with a report on what they learned. So that was a highlight. Another focus was well-being and looking at the special social-emotional needs of our advanced academic students. So we looked at some survey questions that perhaps could be added to the student survey or the parent survey, and not just, I guess, the social-emotional learning needs of the students, but also the communication with the parent, because that also enhances the well-being of those students. So we looked at survey questions, and we're also looking at what data is available that we can be diving into and understanding to track that well-being. And then the last highlight was around communication. And there's a lot of information on the school's Advanced Academic website, but as we looked at it, we really felt like there were some opportunities to enhance really the community's or the parents' understanding of that information. So we've created a laundry list of things to look at. Again, not a one-year endeavor, but we've done some of the low-hanging fruit around how information is organized. There's a new front page to the Advanced Academics page that summarizes on a one-page, like what are the services at a very high level at each school? And then this summer, we're going to be working on the FAQs. So what FAQs are there, how it's organized, et cetera. And then, you know, on a financial perspective, we really appreciate the school's continuing support, or the school district's continuing support of teachers who are pursuing their endorsement and hope that that continues long-term, because we think that's a very valuable... Very valuable for our students to have teachers there with that endorsement. And then last is the recommendation that we change the name of the committee to Advanced Academic Advisory Committee, and that's just consistent with, I think, the language that the school district is now using around advanced academics. The state is moving more to advanced academics terminology. It does change our acronym to A-C-K. So we'll be working on, you know, maybe something better or more appropriate than that, but for now, that's our recommendation around our name.
Maybe A-P-A-C.
A-P-A-C.
Parent Advisory Committee, Advanced Academic Parent Advisory.
Except we also have a student, so... Community?
A-C-A-C?
A-C-A-C?
No, that's not...
Yeah, exactly.
Great.
Thank you.
Jared?
Yeah, so as the liaison to this committee, I've had the pleasure of, you know, attending the meetings, and I just want to say thank you for your work and the committee's work on looking into the services that we provide to students who take part in the Advanced Academics program. I especially appreciate the coordination between the Special Ed Advisory Committee and the Gifted Education Advisory Committee. I think it's great to see where kind of... Where those kind of topics that lie across what we usually kind of... Kind of put in separate bins to be joined, and so that's been a great thing. And also, I just want to give a shout-out to Julie Macrina and Kim Heddings, who are the staff liaisons. They've done an excellent job of providing various types of information that you all have requested, so good job, team.
And Morgan Okuzio, I would also provide a shout-out to her and all her good work.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Can you talk a little bit about the twice exceptional in terms of the profile or in terms of why that issue was brought up? And what was the impetus for that? Yeah, just a little bit more for the public to understand what twice exceptional means and why that's an important issue.
Sure. So, and I will preface this with, I am not an expert. So just giving you my, you know, parental layperson understanding. But again, I give a lot of credit to Morgan Okuzio. She really brought this to the committee as a need and highlighted it for us. And what we're talking about is, you know, a student who would be needing advanced academics, but may also have a special education need, might be dyslexic, could have ADHD, a variety of needs. And so what works and is appropriate for advanced academic needs might not work so well for someone who has both needs. And so better understanding, you know, how do you... How do you merge those services? So, you know, our school district says we meet every student where they're at, and now we, you know, we're diving down into students who have both needs, and we want to make sure we meet both of those needs.
That's great. Okay, that makes sense, that makes sense.
I think I would just add that it's sort of the same from the special education perspective. Children are found eligible, students are found eligible because they have something that is preventing them from accessing the curriculum. And so the goal of special education is to make sure that children and students are able to access the curriculum at their level with their peers. And if they have both this advanced academic piece, that sometimes confuses why they might also be eligible for special education. But as Connie said, it could be somebody who's on the autism spectrum who has some places where they need support because of that diagnosis, but might be brilliant and need, you know, high-level math or something, you know, because they're... And so that's what we're trying to figure out is how do we... How do we work best together to make sure those students in particular are getting what they need? Because it's not as simple as just offering one service or the other. And it's not as simple as just offering both services. There has to be a very collaborative and intentional approach to that.
Makes sense, okay.
And I think both from a services perspective and an identification perspective. One could camouflage the other. So both understanding when they identify advanced academics, make sure we're including the students who might also have a special education need and vice versa.
Gotcha, okay, that makes sense. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you. So great to see you two. I was served on that committee, so I really appreciate the work, and I know how hard the committee works. You listed so many accomplishments for the year with only five meetings. It was really impressive, so thank you for that. I also, I had mentioned to these rock star women on our way in that we are looking at the entire policy that governs our advisory committees this summer. And I have my first meeting with Ms. Vincent tomorrow to just start looking. It won't be a super easy... It's a big policy, and it's very outdated, so I know it will take some work to get through it. But it's a perfect opportunity to address, you know, discrete things like the title or the name of committees. And then also, you know, the composition of the committees. Are they the right sizes? Are they... You know, is what is in there, what's in there that is really valuable and what's in there that is outdated or not serving us or we're not doing and we should be taken out anyway? So we'll be reaching out over the coming weeks or months as we start digging into that work. So really value... I'm so grateful to have your leadership on these committees, and we'll really look forward to working with you on those pieces. In terms of the 2E conversation, I find it so fascinating, and I'm curious... I don't know if Dr. Noonan... I'm sure you don't know off the top of your head, but if there's a sense of if there's got to be data somewhere on just how many students we have that would have like both identifications?
We do have that data, and we can get it for you.
Yeah, that would be really interesting. And then I'm sure, as you're alluding to, and I'm sure as the professionals are more aware than any of us, the challenge, I'm sure, is finding those students where one is masking the other. Like one identification is... There's a compensation or a challenge that is preventing the other identification either way from being found, and so that they possibly aren't even getting the services on one end or the other that they could be. So I think that's just really interesting work. I know it's extremely complicated, and it would take a lot of great work from a lot of great people to get it done, but I look forward to learning more about that. Thank you.
And if I can just say, I was very appreciative of, you know, in second grade, there is a big process for going through the identification. And what I saw with the staff was they are very increasing their understanding of sort of that 2E profile and are much... Are continuing to improve their... How they view and identify the students that need the advanced academics. So I, you know, have appreciated their continuing to evolve and to look at their processes, and I think it's been very successful, and will continue, you know, to evolve that.
Sure.
Just on that, I did actually, I have read both the plans, the formal plans that the committees have put together last spring, and I don't remember off the top of my head. I'm sure it could be there, and I forgot. But I don't remember the 2E piece being a part of the plan or documented. And I'm just curious if there is an opportunity when we get farther along in this conversation. Is it something that we should be incorporating into our local plan? Is there a need for... I'm just curious, like what we... If there's other further recommendations or what other districts do to sort of give more structure to how these students are being served? Just curious.
If that's a question, I think it is certainly something that we can, you know, start with what is the universe of students that are identified as 2E. I appreciate Ms. Ryberg's comment that we are spending a lot more time during the screening process, making sure, and we can talk about how those students are served generally. But it also strikes me that it'd be a great opportunity for some collaboration between the two committees to do some work around twice exceptional students, too, to talk about what are some of those best practices in identification and even in classroom instruction.
Am I still this one now? Just going to come back and forth. No, that's exactly right. I don't have a specific question. I just think it's really interesting to, you know, with an eye towards at the end of this conversation or months from now when we have more data and more recommendations, like should this be folded more formally into a policy or the plan? Or, you know, once we have a better sense, the board at least has a better sense. And it sounds like it's an issue that's evolving in the education world, too, that constantly learning more about and best practices on how to serve them. I just, I look forward to it.
To the best of my understanding, the small group that Connie mentioned is doing just that. It is looking at what we have from the Virginia Department of Education that guides, you know, provides guidance and resources around 2E, but then is also taking a broader look at what's out there with, I think, the intention of coming up with something both from the staff perspective and the committee's perspective of what would be the best way for us as a school district to provide those services and address those needs, so. But I appreciate your comment, and I took a note on it, that if we're going to continue to work on that, that we should probably be more explicit about that in our committee plans at the very least before, you know, so that you can keep track of it and hold us accountable to it.
It is funny. I got my master's degree in special education in 1993, and I was talking about twice exceptional then. So it has been around for a while, but it hasn't gotten a lot of support or traction, which is really unfortunate.
So this year, because of the issues that you have identified and in the development of the Advanced Academic Plan, one of the places that we saw really across both committees and then across our team here at Central, our teams here at Central Office was there was, you know, a big piece missing. And so in order to do that work, Morgan Okuzio, I'll make sure I say her last name correctly, and Angelina Prespatino have partnered together. So you have an advanced academics, you know, specialist along with our special education specialist working together with that committee. And their intention is to make sure that it is reflected holistically and appropriately in the plan in the future and then also create resources for, you know, for parents and so that we can all as a community learn more about this, you know, particular group of students who have some amazing gifts and, you know, also come with some needs. Hope that helps a little bit.
Other questions or comments for Schreiber or any of our chairs that are here? Okay. Well, thank you very much for attending. Thank you clearly for all the work you have done. And we look forward to your continued partnership in the future. So, yeah, you're more than welcome to stay or you can enjoy the the rest of the meeting of your choice. So, yeah. Okay, we are going to now move on to 2.0. Oh, Dr. Noonan.
Before we move on, can I just give a shout out to the SAOs who aren't aren't here tonight? But I do meet with them once a month. And they have been extraordinary liaisons to the PTAs, the boosters, the athletic band, choral, and also the foundation. And then we have the BIE that actually comes as well. So just wanted to say thanks to our SAOs. And we've got a transition now with some new coming in. Some of them have been here before and are coming back and some are brand new. So just wanted to say thanks to them.
No, great, great, Roman. Thanks, Dr. Noonan. That's, yeah. It's a as as the public can hear, there's a lot of efforts, a lot of organizations, and there's a lot of ways to get involved and help out and support. So so please contact any of us if you're interested and we can point you in the right direction. All right. Now we'll move on to 2.02, our technology use in schools discussion, which we like to have. We'd like to have, do you need help or you?
I'm just using technology.
Okay, yes. Okay. And what we'd like to do tonight is we'd like to have, in to some degree, a kickoff conversation with the board, with the staff about our thoughts on technology in the schools. This is clearly an important and critical topic. It's a it's a it's a social well-being topic. It's an emotional well-being topic for our students. It's an academic topic. And I think we can all agree it's a complicated topic. There are many levels to this conversation of technology in schools as Mr. Pickering and Mr. Lau pointed out in their May Technology Forum with parents. We are not just talking about turning on or off devices. We are talking about all the how we do this at the different levels, elementary, middle, high school. We are talking about the devices itself, personal versus school provided. And we're also talking about the types of devices. It's not just phones. It's not just laptops. But there are a number of school districts that are now writing policies around, all the way down to earbuds, whether they students can use those in hallways, given the distraction, or in classrooms, watches. So there's a there's lots of different layers in here. We should say Falls Church City does have a number of policies on the book. And that's like most school districts in the country. I think the latest is 78% of the districts have some kind of restricted use. The enforcement is the issue. And I think we can all agree that enforcement is a is an issue at Falls Church City as well as probably many districts across the country. We're not alone in this issue and we're also not the leaders in this issue. Many school districts, many states, and many countries have already passed policies. So to some degree, we're trying to play catch up. But we're also trying to do it in a way that reflects where we are as a staff, where we are as a school board, where we are with teachers, parents, and yes, even students. So tonight, we like to try to do two things. And that's what I'm trying to frame for us and the community. We want to talk with have a conversation about what's going to happen this summer. And Dr. Noonan and his team are have planning sessions. They've already been talking about this and we want to make sure we understand what's going to change when students come back in the fall. And that would be a great discussion to have. And we can share our concerns, which we've heard many, especially in the last few weeks. We also want to have a discussion about the larger policy, regulatory, culture change that we want to do and want to lead as a district. And again, that is in conjunction with this board, with the administration, with teachers, with staff, with students, with parents. And that's a bigger effort. Both of those can happen at the same time. And we want to impress upon that with the people that are watching or listening, where we don't have to wait for one to do the other. So I look forward to this discussion. Hopefully that helped frame some of the things that we're going to be taking on tonight. And I would end with, this is not our final discussion. This is our kickoff discussion to some degree. And yes, maybe this discussion has been had by school boards five, six, seven years ago. But we would really like to try to work on this culture change of how our district approaches technology and do that as a group, school boards, parents, staff, teachers, students, as I mentioned, administration. So that's what I'd like to discuss tonight. I think we can open this up with just a general sharing of where we're at, what we've heard, recommendations, work that's being done. So I'm going to kind of pause there and look at cues. Dr. Noonan, do you want to jump in as well? And then we'll go to the board.
Yeah. Well, first and foremost, thank you for setting that up. I think that we are, I wouldn't say excited, but open to having a conversation about this. We know that there's a lot of research that is starting to emerge regarding, as you mentioned, some of the social emotional issues associated with particularly social media. How students consume social media is in a variety of different ways. We know that we currently have some policies in schools that do ostensibly limit technology. And when I say that, I mean personal technology specifically. And I appreciate you sort of separating those two issues because I think it'll be really important to sort of bifurcate between personal use items and then those that are used for classroom instruction. Because I do think in the in the right in the right mixture of classroom instruction, technology can really be a useful tool. But I also recognize that, for example, that, you know, we still have personal devices that do come out when they're not supposed to come out. So it is some enforcement issue there. So with respect to what's changing sort of with the coming year, one is that we've communicated to to both elementary principals that we are going to limit smartwatches. That is something that has been allowed. And we've had some students that have worn smartwatches to school. But we're not going to allow students at the elementary school to be wearing smartwatches. Phones, of course, are not part of the culture in our elementary schools. And so I don't see that as an issue. And I want to be clear when we say we're limiting those. And we know that some parents communicate with their elementary students through their smartwatches. I think I've told the story where we unfortunately had a grandparent call their kindergartner in the middle of class on their phone. And the student answered the call and on the phone and said, I'm.
Watch.
Or watch, sorry, on their watch and said, I'm in class. I'll call you back. So so we would say that in in those particular cases, that if a student has a smartwatch for some reason, it can certainly be in their bag for before school or they can take it with them after school. But during the school day, there wouldn't be any any need for that. At the middle school, and I've spoken with Steve Pickering about this, he did send me sort of their updated tech use guidelines. He's provided some very clear expectations with respect to classrooms, hallways, pack, lunch, recess, library, personal devices. And again, part of that is a more of a enforcement sort of issue. And what I think that I heard from Mr. Pickering in the last couple of days is that they really want to double down on the off and away throughout the day idea. So that students, whether you're our sixth graders are really good, our eighth graders not so great. But we want sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to have those off and away throughout the day. And then I think the real sort of question that we want to sort of engage with you about is, and I think more than anything with respect to personal devices, is questions specifically regarding maybe use at the at the high school. We have we have a variety of competing interests there. We have emerging adults. We have students that are 18 years old. We have parents who want their kids to begin regulating themselves through sort of the gradual release of responsibility. So they many don't believe that we should be regulating them at the high school. A lot of people believe we should be regulating them at the high school. So I think part of it will be a conversation about how we want to handle really with respect to personal devices through the high school. And so we'd love to collect tonight any questions that you might have about personal use of devices at the high school specifically. And then on the technology side for classroom instruction, our our devices are used for a variety of purposes, right? Many of our textbooks are on devices. Many of our resources are on devices. But we also know that when kids are out in the hallways, they might not always be looking at the online resources that they should be doing. We have some really great tools in place that help with monitoring of where kids go on these devices. For example, you heard the term securely tonight. We do have securely. So parents can monitor the websites that they go to when they're on our devices in our schools. I'm not sure that everybody knows that, right? And so I think from a from an instructional technology perspective, this could be a really great exercise for us to sort of learn together about what are some of the best practices for instructional technology in the classroom. And so what we'd like to do tonight, if we can, again, is collect questions that you may have about about devices and about use and about monitoring and about filtering. And then we'd like to come back in August and have those answers available to you. And then as part of that, if it makes sense throughout the next month or however long it takes, to invite some of our teachers in, some of our staff, our leaders in, to talk about how technology is used in the classroom so that you have a more robust understanding from pre-K 12 about how devices are used in schools. We, as the central office administrators, aren't in the day-to-day use. And so it would be really valuable, I think, to hear from those that are using it on a on a routine basis, what guardrails they put up, how it connects to the instructional program and the like. So we're really here more than anything to listen and then to serve as a resource to be able to answer your questions. We do hope that, and I'll speak, well, I'll just speak for myself. I hope that we can use this opportunity again to learn. We know that there's a lot of, again, emerging research about social media, the appropriateness of that at younger ages particularly, and how it impacts social and emotional social and emotional issues for kids. We don't want to ignore that at all. So some of some of the things we might want to ask questions about are like, what are what are the average uses in classrooms? Or how often is it used? Or what are the appropriate instructional times? And I don't want to lead you down a path with questions because I want to I want you to be able to use to ask your questions. But I would suspect that it would be different at elementary and at middle and at high as well. So being able to come with a sort of general package of answers for you and teachers and administrators and parents and students, if we want to do go that far with panels, we certainly can. But we're more than anything here to listen and to support your learning as a board so that you can make a really informed decision that takes into account everybody's perspective. Because I think we are starting to hear from parents now. In fact, one of our principals said that a parent was in the office today and they're beginning a letter-writing campaign about this. That same principal said, I'm not sure that these people that are writing these letters reflect the entire community. So how do we sort of help understand what everybody's perspective is and then help you make good decisions?
Okay. Yeah, I think it'd be important for us to raise questions and talk about what we've heard in the community as well as our own concerns. And we all are parents as well, so going through this experience. And I think the concerns that at least I've read are all valid. And I don't know if we're going to look for a poll of how many emails we get, but I think that concerns that are raised, especially in the last few weeks, are critically important for us to discuss and listen to. So I think right now I'm going to open it up. We're going to have more of a conversation. We can ask questions to Dr. Noonan. We can talk about our own thoughts and what we've heard from the community. So I'm going to just keep trailing on until someone, there we go. All right, Jared, you've.
I guess I'll just kick off the conversation focusing more on personal use devices. And then we can later on do kind of more questions about school-provided devices. I think that kind of probably focuses a little bit of attention. And I do want to start out with an anecdote of technology in the classroom has come a long way since I've been in school and I'm sure since Tate was using carrier pigeons back in his day. But I was watching a high school musical with my kids a few weeks ago and the the people got detention for using their phones in class. And so it's just it's it was an interesting contrast to see where where tech use is in schools these days. I think regarding personal use devices, I'm glad to hear that it'll be more restrictive at the elementary. I think I think that's good. I think young kids don't really know how to use those. And because of the varying access to that, it can cause quite a bit of, I think, strife among students if, you know, some kids are using it and some kids are not. So and I also think it just kind of focuses their their kind of limited attention on what they should be doing already. Regarding like, I guess, personal use devices at the secondary, I'm glad it's, you know, going to be a little bit more restrictive also at the at MEH. I know that, you know, there's the off and away policy right now. From what I understand from several parents, they get ready text messages, replies from their kids even during class. And so I think having a little bit more enforcement will kind of help with that. I know as a when I was when I was teaching discussion sections to undergrad students, the their ability to focus while other people were on certain devices was quite compromised. And so I think that's I think regardless of any kind of social aspects, I think having that academic kind of that academic aspect as kind of at least to a certain degree front and center is important just because even without the even without any kind of social or emotional impacts, the tech usage can severely negatively impact academic progress. And I guess I want to kind of pose a question as to what is the purpose of phones in the schools? Because I know that, you know, my my sons can take toys to school if it's a special day. And to a certain degree, like phones aren't just toys, but I think a lot of kids use them as toys more so, more so than I think we would like. At the at the Tech Town Hall for Parents, there was a kid in the lobby curled up in a chair, earbuds in, and he was playing a video, like watching a video of somebody playing a video game. And while we want to say that, yes, we should just kind of allow more usage because they're getting older, I don't I hesitate to say that the school should be responsible for teaching appropriate personal cell phone usage. Because the schools already do so much. And I would hate to put that more things on the on the teacher's plates. And so in thinking about cell phone usage and as you're going through, I would urge you to think about what the purpose is and what phone usage takes away from what we also want to see, which is stronger community at the at the high school. So when kids put in earbuds and start watching videos, you know, is that enhancing the community at the at the high school? Or is it detracting from students making genuine connections? And I've already gone long enough, so I'll stop there. That can be a bit.
Thanks for that. And we're just taking questions. We're not going to make judgments or as as we work through it, we just hope to answer the questions.
Lori?
Thank you. I have a bunch of questions. First, I guess I would like, it would be interesting to hear, we got a good view, I think, tonight as to what the policy is for personal use devices. I don't know if we got a full grasp on what the school device policy is. So that might be something to consider for August. I have a bunch, if that's okay, Chairman. Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair, for nodding your head. Second is, how much time is spent on screens? It's something, Dr. Noonan, that you had mentioned, from JTP through Meridian in an academic purpose specifically. I understand there are there might be benefits. might be benefits, educational benefits for classroom use with, with laptops. But, you know, I do know that children are suffering more from migraines. They're suffering more from eyesight issues. I would just like to get a better grasp as to how much time is actually spent on devices for educational use. Third is, are there benefits for YouTube and other such types of websites for educational purposes? Four, are parents receiving a regular, accurate daily report? Because I'm hearing anecdotally from parents that their securely report does not actually reflect the exact data that, that they're getting from securely. The data they're getting from securely does not actually reflect what's actually happening. So that there is a discrepancy. And so I'm hearing that anecdotally from parents for when they do ask for a data dump, you know, it's different than what securely has been telling them. I don't know what number I'm on, but the next one, why are students able to type an IP address and therefore able to bypass filters? And is there a way to prevent that from happening? Next is, can we have a denial list versus, or, sorry, why do we use a denial list rather than an allow list? So is, can we, instead of having these websites you can't get to, can we have, these are the websites that you're allowed to be on? And finally, maybe I'm old fashioned, but you know, are all textbooks online? Are there some textbooks that are pure textbooks these days? Even today, you know, when I read, when I read a nonfiction type of resource book, I don't get it on my Kindle for, for a specific reason. That's so I can flip back and forth and, and find something on paper pages. And I feel like, for, at least for me personally, I feel like I learn better from paper, from being able to manually underline something, highlight something, write in the margins, take notes that way versus just reading a textbook on a, a computer. Again, maybe I'm old fashioned. That's the way I learn best. And I'm, there might be others that learn best that way as well. And I think that is it for now. Thank you.
Just to your last point, Lori, the research actually shows that reading from paper helps with longer-term comprehension than reading from electronics. So it's not just old fashioned. And that's been true for all different demographics and ages. So, yeah. So, thanks, Lori. Questions or, and this is kind of a discussion, so I don't want to, if you want to just jump in, that's fine. You don't have to keep looking to me for who's talking.
Thank you. I, my first note here, I guess you've, you've already addressed, my number one question was how we can hear from the teachers. And so I'm really looking forward to, you mentioned maybe bringing teachers in in the fall and sharing with us, you know, how they're using technology or what they see as the challenges. We're starting to hear a lot from parents, which I really appreciate. And there's a lot of really good feedback and concerns there. But that's only one piece of this complicated puzzle. And so I'm really looking forward to, to hearing that teacher voice. Similarly to Lori's point, I have a lot of questions about YouTube. I know at the secondary level, there is actually a lot of valuable videos on YouTube that actually have a lot of educational purposes. But what, what are the options for accessing those videos in a different way or limiting YouTube more strictly past that? I mean, it's, I know we have some limits. I mean, I know we have some limits on YouTube, but are there options for either further restricting YouTube or somehow letting, you know, having teachers put the YouTube video on some other, I don't understand technology well enough to, I'll leave it at that. Are there other ways that we can access technology with, or restrict, or YouTube more? Securely, I agree with you, Dr. Noonan, that I don't think all the parents are fully educated. I know I'm, I try to keep up with it, but I know I, I have a lot of learning to do too. And I imagine a lot of parents do as well with how to use securely and get the most out of that tool. I'm wondering if, if partnering, you know, pairing a training session with back to school night or some opportunity where we, you get a lot of parent engagement already would be a natural pairing. I don't want to, yeah, that's just one idea. I'm sure you have other ideas as well. But making sure that from the get-go in the fall, we're really educating the parents, especially as they get to the secondary level and they're new there. There's so much to learn when you first start with middle school and high school. And then I guess my other question is, for the, the middle school, obviously when we're talking about personal devices, is it a clear distinction because there are not lockers? So saying something like, put your phone in your locker is not an option, obviously, at Meridian, because we don't have lockers there. And so I'm curious, I know there are a lot of different options out there, magnetic bags and storage containers and all sorts of things that we're all, I'm sure, reading about in the, all the articles that are out these days. And I'm curious if there's a leading option as a consideration. If, it seems like on the more, on the more extreme, but certainly, you know, possible option for the high school. And a lot of that, I think, would also pair with the teacher, with, with the teacher voice. And if they feel like a policy of just put it away, I don't want to see it, if they, you know, if that is practical or realistic, or if it would really take something, you know, more significant. And we would have to provide the infrastructure. And there's obviously like a cost to that. And there's, there has to be a lot of research and what was the best one to use and all of that. I'm just curious.
I think the, what I'd really like to know more about is personal use of, what is permitted personal use of our school issued technology? So, you know, is it sometimes used as a reward for when work is completed? Are you allowed to, you know, surf the web when you have free time? You know, what, what, what guidelines are there for personal use? Is tech allowed as an option during recess? I read some emails that said that students were permitted on occasion to choose to not go outside for recess at the elementary schools and instead were allowed free time on laptops. Yeah, I don't have elementary school kids, so I, this was news to me. I'd like to know more about, oh, what personal communications are permitted over schoolagies? So if kids at the high school or the middle school, you know, if they don't have their phones, what's, what, how, are they allowed to communicate with their friends during class over schoolagie? Do we need restrictions around that if it's becoming, you know, disrupting the classrooms? Those are, those are really the questions that I would like to have answered in addition to the ones that I've heard tonight.
I just had one more. The level of securely that we currently have versus upgraded levels, what that provides us and the cost of all those, and determining if there's something different that we could be doing with securely with an upgraded level.
All right. I'm glad we're having this conversation. I hear about this a lot from a lot of different people. So let me just back up before I get to my questions with some context. Hundred percent agree with you, Dr. Noonan, that instructional tech has really meaningful value. And I want to make sure, as we are raging, raising children who are going into a digital world, that we are not in any way disadvantaging them. I also am aware of the benefits our district has of the very customized curriculum our teachers create and the opportunities for our kids to get access to primary sources because of that. And almost all of that is because of tech, right? We don't have all of that in our library. And I think that's extremely, extremely important. And I want to make sure that as we have this really important conversation, we are not losing that value, particularly at the, at the middle and high school level, the secondary campus. I also really appreciate the distinction that you're making, that Mr. Pickering and Mr. Loud made at the Tech Town Hall at the end of the school year about the distinction between personal and school issued devices. I think they're related, but not the same matters. And, you know, who's responsibility it is to manage each of those devices, the parents versus the, the district. And then during what times, right, during the school day and beyond the school day. I am concerned that this concept of enforcement is the approach, especially at the middle school level, sets kids and teachers up for failure, not success. It puts teachers, I want to hear from teachers what they think, but from the outside looking in, I worry that creating more policing opportunity or expectations of teachers makes it hard to build that rapport, that connection. I am concerned at the high school level, they don't have lockers. There's nowhere to put the devices away. And I know that particularly as the kids get to be juniors and seniors, right, they're navigating college issues and external classes and all of that. So I do, the scaffolding by youth development makes a lot of sense by age and stage. But I'm really concerned the enforcement approach sets no one up for success. And so my overarching question, and I'll read all my other questions and I'll email them to you, so you don't have to write them down. But my overarching question for us to consider and for staff is what can we as a district, what can and should we do to set kids at all ages up for success in the constructive use of tech during the school day in a way that scaffolds them through the youth development journey? And that doesn't inadvertently disadvantage kids who are more vulnerable to tech overuse or misuse. So we're talking middle school. And I think about vulnerable kids in this sense, there's certainly the kids who don't have tech at home. And so then there's a differentiation in terms of access to education. But there are also kids at different stages of brain development. There are kids who are neurodivergent and just don't have that developed prefrontal cortex, even though they might be 12 or 15 or 17. And so how do we navigate this in a way that creates the environment that sets our kids up for success, rather than creating a punitive environment that doesn't help them or the teachers actually get to the goal? So that's kind of the big picture framing as I think about this. All right. You don't have to write these down. I will email them all to you, Kristen. But I'm going to read them anyway. So here's my list of questions. I'm very curious for context, what staff are currently involved in setting, managing and enforcing student tech use during the school day? You know, beyond sort of the, in the classroom environment, who's involved in actually setting and dealing with this stuff on a daily basis? I'm curious, we used to have a tech advisory committee. It seems like tonight that it, maybe it's been folded into health and wellness. I'm not entirely sure. This predates my time paying attention to this. But given the fact that this is going to be in a continually evolving and changing environment, whether it makes sense for us to have or reinstate some sort of tech advisory committee focused on helping us evolve this, because this is not a one-shot done. I was, I spent a lot of time in my day job today talking about AI. And that was sort of the same thing as well. You know, AI is not one and done. We haven't even talked about AI in this context, right? That's a whole nother thing. This is evolving. And so there are plenty of experts in our community who could help guide all of us on this as it evolves. I'm curious from a baseline, how much time students are spending on non-instructional use of tech during the school day? I can say anecdotally, it seems to be a whole lot, certainly on the secondary campus during the school day. And so I want, I imagine, I hope that with securely, there is some way to access that data in aggregate, so we can get a sense of what, you know, is our expectation, what is a baseline and where our kids are. So we just have a sense of what's actually going on and not just sort of guessing based on lots of anecdotes. I'm curious what guidance is currently given to teachers about the instructional use of technology beyond the FCCPS policy, which I recently reread, but specifically what's get, what the guidance is given to them at different levels. And not about enforcing it, but about their use of technology in the instruction in their classrooms. Whether, and I'm curious, have teachers raised any concerns to administrators about students playing games or watching videos during instructional time? We've certainly heard that from parents. I've heard that from students as well. I'm curious how teachers are trained in the instructional use of technology, what they want and prefer, what would be helpful to them in educating students in terms of a policy or tech controls on school issued tech during the school day. And I personally haven't talked to my colleagues about this. I personally would be very interested in doing something like the teacher town halls you did for the start times last year. We could really get sort of a more holistic perspective from a bunch of teachers going to them as opposed to making them come to us. I have some really technical questions, which some of my colleagues have already raised. Why was the decision made, or how was the decision made to choose a block versus allow list? Does that make sense still at all levels? Or is that something that should be differentiated by age? Same thing with, you know, should we be moving to embedding YouTube videos so kids can't fall down the YouTube rabbit hole? Are there other things, opportunities within the tech platforms themselves that allow us to create the scaffolding to set kids up for success? I'm curious about how and to what extent we currently use and could use securely data, since that seems to be the platform the school has chosen, by teachers or building admins or central office to assess tech use on an ongoing basis. Again, not an individual child or classroom basis, but on a collective basis to understand if the use is moving in the correct direction. I'm curious what the securely data shows about how students are spending their time on laptops during the school day. Again, in aggregate, I'm curious whether we do or have the capacity to do periodic tech audits of any group of or individual middle and high school students, especially during school hours on their computers. We know these kids are really smart, right? And they can get around pretty much any, you know, thing we put in place. And so I'm curious if we actually know what's happening, like how we can tell what's happening. And again, not for a punitive purpose, but to understand what is actually happening. What are we dealing with? And I'm curious, what are the tech options within or beyond securely, if we determine it valuable to put stronger guardrails in place? I do check my kids securely things. I have no idea if they're telling me what my kids actually did all day, right? So I have to just trust that they are. And having heard some anecdotal reports that they're not as concerning, so I hope that's something that y'all will absolutely look into and come back to us in August and say, yeah, that is or isn't happening. I just have no idea, based on my own personal experience. But it'd be really helpful to understand it's, you know, how we can use that resource better in a way to help us achieve the ultimate goal, right? Which is having kids, being able to educate kids in the most productive environment possible for them. All right, I've said a lot. I'm going to stop.
Thanks for sending those to us.
Dr. Noonan, can you talk about what possible enforcement would, would look like this fall? I think you heard that from a few board members. And I know we've heard that from a number of the emails. And I think from teachers' voices as well of, you know, they don't want to become enforcement police. And how do we take that burden off of them? What are your thoughts on how do we get to a point where enforcement is more, taking your example, the elementary school and watches, you know, limiting use? How do we make sure that is a clear line that, like you said, there are no watches allowed? They have to be turned off, put in their backpack? What is your thoughts or philosophy on the enforcement of that? So teachers aren't burdened by being the police on this? How does that work?
I think I would, I would start with, one, it requires good communication from us to be able to tell parents that this is a change that's beginning this coming year. And I think at the elementary schools, that's already started to come out. And those conversations, I, I would say it's a partnership with our parents. You know, we, we hear a lot from parents that they don't want their kids to have phones at school. And I, I think one of the things that I would invite our parents to do is to ask their kids not to come to school with the phone. So I think there's, there's kind of a, there's two ways to sort of deal with this, right? I think there's the home side and there's the school side. And we would appreciate, I think, as a school, to have more of the enforcement happening at home. So if we have a, a rule at the elementary school that you can't have smart watches, we hope that our parents in the community will not let their kids come to school with smart watches. In an elementary school, the teachers are with their 24 kids, 23 kids, 22 kids every day. And they are the ones that are going to see the watches. They're, they're going to be the ones that will have to move those kids along to speak to folks in the office to collect the watch. For, as an example, they would, they would send, if I had a, if I was a second grade teacher and a kid was in my classroom and I had a student with a smartwatch, I would ask them to go to the office and turn the smartwatch in. And then the parent would need to come pick that up. So I, I don't know that it's over burdensome from that perspective, in that I don't think we're going to have that many at the elementary. I think the greater concern about sort of to Ms. Henderson's point, is probably more likely to occur at the middle school as we begin to shift this culture to say, when we say it needs to be in your locker, it needs to be in your locker. Because someone is going to have to call a middle school student out for having their phone out during the school day and deal with them, whether it's the collection of the phone, sending to the office, tell them to go put it in their locker immediately. And that will likely be one of the adults in the, in the building. Whether, and the most adults that are in the building are teaching staff. So I think we're going to, it is going to be a group effort, a team effort to deal with this. But our, but our teachers are going to be, are going to be involved with helping us clean it up. But my hope is that we can communicate really strongly with our parents from the jump to say, you know, our middle school kids have to have them in their lockers, period. And if they aren't, they're going to, they're going to be asked, you know, I don't know necessarily how Mr. Pickering is, is going to scaffold it or structure it for kids. But I would imagine the first time it's, go put it away. Second time it's, I've had, talked to you twice about it. There's, you know, now you need to go down and talk to the administration. Third time, parent needs to come pick it up. I don't know exactly what the right mixture of I don't know exactly what the right mixture of, or level would be, but having worked as a principal in the school, that's likely how we would have handled it. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
No, that does. I think, I think for the middle school, you're right, having those clear expectations for the students, the teachers and the parents. So it is a group effort. I like that, that, that concept that we all know what the, the discipline actions are and the enforcement rules are. I think the elementary school, I think, respectfully, I push back a bit on expecting it to be from parents, because I think what you said earlier is, we're gonna allow watches to be in the school at the elementary, but they have to be away and in their bag. So I think from a parent, is that correct?
No, that's right. What I, what I think I said was, there are a lot of parents out there that don't want us to have phones in schools. And if those parents don't want their kids to have phones in schools, I would ask that they not let their students come to school with phones. In terms of watches or phones, if a parent says, I want my kid to have a watch at the elementary school, that's fine, but it needs to be in a backpack for the day, because they can use it before school or they can use it after school, but they can't use it during the day.
Yeah.
That's what I, is that clear?
That's, that's clear, yeah. So I think, I think you might get the pushback from parents to say, I don't want my kids, I don't want any kids to have phones in schools and I'm not sending my kid with a phone. My kid doesn't have a phone, it's the other parents that are allowing that. So how do we reconcile those two? I think that's where the enforcement should be clear come fall to make sure what are the expectations? You know, because I, I think that, I think that's where this, the watches are, I, I feel like the watches and the, and the phones, how you've talked about it, are pretty much the same. They're being regarded the same at the elementary school, which it seems like that's the right approach. So we can talk about them interchangeably at the elementary school, is that fair?
Yeah, I think that's fair.
So, so having very clear expectations of, they're allowed to bring these devices to school, but they have to be off in the backpack? Or are we thinking, or are you thinking, your staff thinking, they can't bring them at all? That kind of clarity, I think, might need to be communicated very, very clearly upfront, you know, when people start to come.
Yeah, I think, I think what we've said, maybe I wasn't clear, is that, you know, at the elementary school, there are going to be parents that want their kids to have a phone or a watch. And as I see it, they're not allowed to be in school, but if they are, they need to be put away. And they can use them before school or after school, because we have a lot of kids that walk. So parents may wanna have a student have a phone in case they get in trouble walking. It just can't, it just needs to be away for the day, period. Phone, watch, doesn't matter. Same at the element, at the middle school. If, and, and, and we are, I'm not talking about watches now, I'm just talking about phones.
Yeah, okay.
They need to be away for the day. You can have it in your backpack, you could, we prefer that it's in your locker. I, I mean, I'm, I would need to talk to Mr. Pickering, but it just needs to be away. There's no place for a phone in a classroom during the school day at the middle school. And I think what you'll hear from Mr. Pickering is that the intention is to enforce that. Now, students may still bring them to school and keep them in their locker, but because before school or after school, they may be walking home, they, the parents may wanna get in touch with them, et cetera. So they may, they're gonna be in school, they just need to be away.
Yeah, and I like your, your phrase, off and away throughout the day. That's a very clear line that not only are they allowed to be there, but they can't be buzzing in their backpack, which I know a number of districts are saying, having the, the phone on, on vibrate two feet away is almost the same as having on the desk. So I like your phrase, yeah, off and away throughout the day is a very, that's a good bumper sticker too. We can do buttons, we can do a lot of different things. And I think that's also clear for all of us. You keep saying, and I completely agree with you, this is a group effort. Parents have to know this, teachers have to know this, school board, all the admin, we all have to be on this together. And I know you and Dr. Bates have run schools and you know that for something like this, what we're talking about is a culture change. We have slid back, and it's not just COVID, it happened before COVID, it's happened with districts. We have slid backwards on terms of how we're allowing or how we're treating school, device use. And to go back to where we, I think we all seem to kind of are pointing toward, it's gonna take a group effort. Culture change, and I'm looking at Dr. Bates, that's very hard to do for a community. So I like the concept of being very clear and being very, everyone can say the bumper sticker of off and away throughout the day, for example. So that's gonna be very clear for success this fall for, for changes. Lori?
Dr. Noonan, just to comment on, on one statement you made, that if you don't want your kid to have a phone in school, don't send that, your child with a phone. I definitely do not want my kids to be in school with a phone. However, they need to have a phone sometimes, especially kids who aren't necessarily coming home right after school, possibly have two different houses that they go home to. Going, you know, if, if childcare is an issue and they're going to somebody else's house. So I definitely do not want my kid to have a phone in school, but they definitely do need a way to contact me for after school or before school. So that issue gets kind of touchy.
I totally, I think I was misunderstood.
Okay.
I, I think what I was saying was, if you're a parent and, and your student doesn't have any need to have a phone at school, don't send them to school with a phone, if, if that's your desire. But if your desire as a parent is to send your student to school with a phone, for whatever reason, whether it's after-school stuff, before-school stuff, it needs to be off and away.
Perfect, yes, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, I'll just chime in, I agree with, with, with all three of you and where we're going with this and in terms of the partnership with parents. I also think it's difficult because there's not just one approach, because everyone has different kinds of phones. But there is also in terms of the parental piece and the parental options as we're working through this, or if, if we get to a place that not all, that not all parents are happy with, I'm sure we, you know, we're not gonna please everyone no matter where we end up. But there are ways to turn your kid's phone off remotely during the day too. You know, you can set up your kid's phone that they, regardless of what the school policy is, that they have no or limited access to it for whatever hours you set on there. So I think as a stopgap now, or, or in the future, if parents want more restrictions, but they still want the phone physically with their kid, there are plenty of ways to have more control over your kid's personal device, even when your kid is not with you. To me, I find the more challenging piece, or the more interesting, the piece that I'm even more interested in is the school-issued technology. Because when I asked a, a group of high schoolers what they thought about us getting, you know, what, what, what would happen? What would it look like if, if the schools got rid of phones during the day? They're like, well, we would do almost everything on our laptop instead. So, and I don't know if they were just being flippant. I know there are, so, there are restrictions on our school-issued laptops, but I'm curious kind of what they are. And in terms of culture shift, how that, what kind of culture shift we're looking at in terms of the school-issued laptops too, and, and on the, in the downtime or in between classes or during their more flexible times during the day? Like what, what are the expectations there? I think that is, to me, a much harder piece to navigate. And I, I certainly don't have any answers, just a lot of curiosity.
Yeah, so I think there's been lots of, lots of interesting questions, so I'm glad you are getting it all down. I think, you know, for, for added context for anybody watching, a lot of the reason why we're, while, why some of the earlier comments were about YouTube is that we've gotten a lot of emails about parents who are concerned with their students' ability to basically have unfettered access to YouTube from elementary school on up. And so I think, you know, kind of having, I, I think Lori and Bethany kind of mentioned this, but it was kind of separated. You know, kind of thinking about the amount of time that was for educational use versus non-educational use. But, you know, kind of just total amount of time, because even if, even, even if all the time that they were on, say, their school-issued laptops was only for educational purposes, if it was way too much, then I would still also be concerned. Because, you know, as, 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 as I think most adults here who are working outside the home, you know, I spend a whole lot of time in front of a screen, you know, just for my job, I have to do it. I would not want my child to spend a whole bunch of time in front of a screen, even if it was for educational purposes. And so kind of thinking about how, how do we balance the educational opportunities and, and privileges that we, we have as, as a district, that Bethany was talking about, with kind of a, kind of having that be intentional use? And so I'll just kind of add that in there. I am, I'm curious about the limits. So I think everyone's kind of mentioned like various filters, blacklist, whitelist. But, you know, again, you're bringing back YouTube. You know, what are, what are the limits? Are there any kind of systems in place where, you know, the, the tech officer sees, oh, this, the student is using YouTube quite a bit today? Like, does it get pinged? I know that, you know, I can, I can set limits on my kid's switch to be like, you only have 30 minutes a day on, on, on this device. I presume that that would be pretty easy to set up on, on the laptops. I mean, like, when I was in, doing my, doing my PhD, I used various software to say, it's like, you cannot go on YouTube. And it would, even shutting it down and restarting, it would still have that restriction in place. And so, and, and I do wanna kind of, kind of, I guess, reiterate the question that I think Amy brought up about whether YouTube and/or games are being used as, I guess, incentives in the class? And that, like, that sounds worrying to some degree, but I remember as a, as an elementary student, we would get, if we finished our work early, then we could go to the computer, computer in the back of the class and do number munchers or word marches or something like that. And so I don't wanna necessarily take away things that students can do, though the things that I could do on a computer back then were much more limited than things students can do on a computer now. So perhaps it's not as good of a system. And so kind of thinking about how it's being used for, for that purpose. And then also how, I would, I would like to hear from teachers about how YouTube is being used for educational purposes. So I know that, you know, we funded lots of smart boards a couple of years ago and they can be put on, put, put on in front of the class. And I'm just curious as to, you know, kind of how much educational use is being used in a kind of classroom, classroom-wide setting versus individual research setting where kids, I presume, would be on their headphones if they were looking at it on their computer? And so kind of thinking, kind of hearing from teachers a little bit more about that would also, would, I think, help with some of the context around this.
Yeah, and, and I think just because Jared mentioned it, I did want to clarify that when I was asking questions about whether or not tech was being used as an incentive or tech was being used as an alternative to recess, I, I simply wanna know more about that. Not, I'm not necessarily saying that I think that that should always be prohibited, because I could imagine that there are some circumstances, especially maybe around kids with special needs or kids with, you know, who are experiencing a rough time and don't wanna go outside for recess. I mean, I can imagine a dozen different reasons why that could be appropriate. I just wanna understand the contours of it, how it's being used.
I also wanna thank you for raising that comment, you know. And I, I'll just go back to the, the phone and the watch use case. There are going to be exceptions to that, just to be clear. There are gonna be some kids that are gonna be allowed to have their phones and their watches for a variety of different reasons, whether it's part of their health plan, whether it's part of their IEP, whether it's part of some other reason. So there will be a small, if we did away with them, there would be a small number of students that will likely have phones and watches.
I just, I think it's very clear to all of us in the room, and I imagine to everybody who's watching in the public too, that this is, you know, we've just listed like 100 questions we have probably collectively. And so it just highlights how complicated this issue is and how it's going to take time to, to whittle away at this and to be intentional. It's not an easy fix, it's not a one, you know, a, a one solution, a one-size-fits-all solution. So I just wanted to be clear that I, at least personally, don't expect, you know, this laundry list of questions to be answered explicitly numbered 1 through 100. I think we've kind of coalesced against a lot of themes and ideas and I look forward to kind of chipping away at this conversation. I think we've, we've brought up too many questions to be answered in just one more conversation, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
I appreciate that. And our plan was to sort of take these questions and put them together thematically and sort of look at them in overarching buckets to see. Because I'm, you know, I've heard, you know, classroom instruction, I've heard amount of time, I've heard safety and security, I've heard YouTube, social networking, et cetera, throughout this as well. So we wanna make sure that we get the buckets so that we can approach that appropriately. And it will take us some time.
And I think you also mentioned different ways of answering the questions too. This doesn't have to be charts or, or the, you know, paragraphs. I think you mentioned like inviting teachers in to talk about how they're using smart boards or how they're incorporating their technology in the instruction. I think that's important as well. In all of this, I do think that given the board's comments, given probably all of our shared concerns about technology, there does seem like, and you've mentioned, there does seem like there can be changes that will happen this fall. And that will be clearly communicated to the parents as they come back. It's not gonna address all of our concerns, but some of these things will change, which is great to hear. And so we look forward to those changes being communicated. Anything we can do from a board's perspective to help with that communication or to, to, to pass on to us? If you need us to help respond to some parents, we'll be glad to do that. I had a, my first principal I worked with, he actually had a policy, he would take away all phones for the rest of the year. And he had a box in his office. And, and the, and the parents that got upset would send the cell phone bills to the school. And he always said, you can come pick it up at the end of the year. And clearly, that's a very different use case than probably what Dr. Noonan is advocating for. But, but it was interesting how angry all the parents were. And not one parent would pick up the phone at the end of the year. And it was, it was a box of phones and it was just interesting how, how, how people assume technology is being used and how much they care about it. So this is a complicated issue. We appreciate all the effort on this, this is gonna be one of our top priorities, you know, for, as a school district to try to tackle and work on. As Dr. Noonan and Kathleen said, this is something we're gonna be working on, not in one session. This will be a, and this is important because it's a very critical issue for our, our students' experience. So thank you, everybody, thanks for hanging in there with all the, the conversations, the comments. Thank you to the public for all of the emails, the anecdotes, the concerns, the questions which driven a lot of this tonight. Thank you to the Health and Wellness Committee, PTAs, everybody who's, who's invested in trying to figure out how to solve this. So we appreciate that. And this will not be our last conversation. So now we're gonna move on to 2.03, State Budget Update. Is this, Dr. Noonan?
Turn it over to Ms. Michael, but before we do, we're gonna take these questions, just so you know, and put them into AI, and AI is gonna answer the questions for you.
Thank you so much for the opportunities this evening to talk about the final state budget. So the General Assembly did convene on May 13th and they did adopt a budget for FY '24 and FY '25. And then Governor Youngkin approved both of those budget bills, so they were enacted. So first, when we look at FY '24, which is the current fiscal year that actually ends at the end of this week, there were budget amendments, but they were technical in nature, so we're not expecting them to have a significant financial impact. And we're waiting for VDOE to give us that final information. So the final state budget impacts will be included in the final budget review that comes to the school board in September. But we have no concerns about that in terms of the overall impact. And when we look at the changes for FY '25, these are the changes that I'm gonna talk about now that are really starting from what, what happened between the original General Assembly bill and what finally happened. So the General Assembly initially wanted to expand the sales tax base, that was part of their proposal. And when the budget was finally adopted, that sales tax base expansion was removed. So they wanted to include additional things in sales tax, like streaming, for example. And in the final budget, none of that was included. There's a relationship between sales tax and basic aid. So when sales tax goes up, basic aid goes down. And when sales tax goes down, basic aid goes up. It's called a basic aid offset. So because they removed that expansion of sales tax from the base, that meant that basic aid then needed to go up some because of that loss in sales tax. But even when you combine the net impact of both of those, it was still a reduction as compared to what was in the General Assembly budget. They also made changes to the infrastructure and operations per pupil and they increased some funding for that. One of the things that they did, and I was very grateful it didn't impact us, was they changed the deadline for when school divisions had to spend their HVAC funding. So we had gotten some ARPA grants for improving ventilation that we used at Maryland-Henderson. So surprisingly, when they adopted the budget in May, they actually moved the deadline for spending that funding up from December 31st to July 31st, which was different, difficult for many school divisions. But thankfully, our funding was fully expended, so no impact there. And then they did make a few other adjustments listed on the slide that don't impact us directly, including reducing funding to the laboratory schools and reducing some funding for Virginia Preschool Initiative based on historical non-participation rates. So when we look at what are the impacts from the final state budget to FCCPS and to the budget adopted by the school board in May? The first is for our standards of quality funding, there was a decrease of just about $173,000. And that resulted from a decrease both in basic aid and sales tax. There was an increase in funding of incentive funding of $686,000. There was an increase in funding of incentive funding of $686,296. That was due to a compensation increase. The original budget that was proposed only had a bonus for staff, and the final budget had a recurring increase for staff. So that provided us with additional compensation funding of $151,393. And then there was also some funding because they were able to restore the supplemental fundraising in lieu of the grocery and food tax. So both of those combined got us to the $686,000 increase in that category. And then the last category of lottery funding also had an increase. It was due to an increase in funding for at-risk, as well as an increase in that operations and infrastructure per pupil funding. So this chart kind of walks through what all of those fiscal impacts were from the final state budget as compared to the school board's budget in May. So as we talked about, the SOQ funding decreased, but that was more than offset by those changes in incentive, which was primarily compensation and that grocery tax hold harmless funding. So overall, the net impact to FCCPS is additional funding of $545,377. So it's really good news in terms of the state.
Before we go.
Yeah, yeah.
Verifying question about this, it's probably a terminology thing, one of those things I don't understand about the state language budgets. When I look at this with my layman's hat, I'm like, oh, incentive accounts, categorical accounts, this feels like restricted funding. Can you talk a little bit about, just clarify that for me, please?
Yes, absolutely, I can. When the state provides funding to school divisions, it's divided in certain funding categories. SOQ is all tied to the standards of quality. When they say incentive accounts, there are requirements. So in order to get that funding, you must meet whatever the requirement is. So in order for us to receive the compensation supplement funding that we just went over, we had to meet their minimum salary increase in order to qualify for that. And the state for incentive funding in recent years has not always had an all or nothing. They often have a category where if you meet a minimum, you can qualify for partial funding. But you're absolutely right, it is restricted and has a required match. They also have categorical accounts, which are based on certain categories of students. And then the last is lottery-funded programs. Over time, when the lottery was first introduced, lottery funding was really extra or supplemental to school divisions. And what the state has done over time is they've moved many items that we would all think of as basic funding into the lottery-funded account. So for me, a perfect example of that is textbook funding. You would never think that textbook funding is from lottery, but that's one of the items in those lottery-funded accounts. So they're just giving the revenue source in that category.
So thank you, that's helpful. Does this mean that, does the state require us to account one for one back? I mean, I know cash is fungible, but if, does this mean that we were, I'm sure this is not actually accurate, so just example. If the state says, all right, you're getting, you know, $200,000 extra for textbooks, that we then have to show the state we spent an extra $200,000 on textbooks? Or at least $200,000 on textbooks? Or how does that work?
So in each of the categories, when you look at funding, we do have what's required, or what's called a required local match. So it's not always dollar for dollar. We're very fortunate in that Falls Church City far exceeds the required local effort for all of the categories. And actually, all the schools and divisions in Virginia are exceeding that amount. So really, the only place where we generally have to be very careful about ensuring that we're going to be able to meet the requirements are in those incentive accounts, right? That's where we have to pay particularly close attention. And what the state does when they send this budget out is they also send for us a document where we have to sign off that we're meeting the obligations for any funding that has specific requirements. Of course. So the recommendation in terms of this additional funding is when the school board approved the budget in May, we had two positions that we had moved from recurring funding to one time. It was the secondary counselor position and the elementary math resource teacher. And we would like to move those fundings, those positions back to recurring funding using this money. So that would be the first recommendation. And then the second would be to defer action on that remaining funding available, which would be $336,517. If we defer funding now, we could wait and see where our enrollment is in the fall, because if we need any additional teachers or positions to cover increased enrollment that could be beyond what we projected, this funding could help us ensure that we could maintain class size by hiring additional positions if needed.
Thank you.
Last slide. I did keep Carlos Ortiz in there.
I don't think we need to let David know. So, no, thank you, Ms. Michael. That's a, it sounds like a better update for the state budget than when you talked to us a few months ago. So we appreciate that. Any questions about the update to the state budget or for Ms. Michael? Yeah, Lori?
Are we needing to make a decision tonight about the deferred funding? Or is that something that is going to be brought to us at a later date?
So this is a work session, so we're just presenting this recommendation, but no action needs to be taken this evening.
Thank you.
But I think we would like to bring it for action in August.
Okay, great.
So if you can help refresh my recollection to the budget cycle that now has passed, I've put it away. Were these the two, were these two changes, the restoring, let me try that again, was the restore of recurring funding, the things that were moved to one time, were they moved to one time because of the other cascade of changes? This was stuff that we had originally wanted, then we moved out when it backed out?
Correct. These were items that were funded with recurring funding in the school board advertised budget. And when we adopted the final budget in May, and there was lower revenue from the general government, we had moved these two positions from that recurring funding to the one-time bucket.
Okay. And so then, is there an expectation that the state funding then will not decrease, such as will then allow us to sustain these?
We do expect the state funding to increase in future years. Generally, it does go up. There have been exceptions to that, but generally, that is what happens.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from Ms. Michael? Great, thank you, Ms. Michael, I appreciate it. Yeah. Okay. That concludes this 2.03 State Budget Update. Now we'll move on to Section 3, Upcoming Agenda Items. Dr. Noonan, you want to preview?
Yeah, thanks. We don't have a whole lot on the agenda yet, because you all will be in a recess for a month in July. But what we do know is that on August 13th, when you come back, there will be a couple of items on there. The first one will be the Virginia School Board's Welcome Back to School. You know, you get the card, you get your picture taken with it. We know that that'll be on there, and we should be able to give you some information at that point about preparations for the upcoming year in the school system as well. And then it wouldn't be a meeting if we didn't talk about policies, so there will be some policies on for August 13th as well. Moving ahead to the August 27th date, as a work session, there are two items in that work session that we anticipate. The first is the K-12 Insight survey data that we collected this last spring, and students and staff survey data. This is data that is two years, remember, we did, you may not remember, two years ago, we did a survey using Insight with our staff and students, and now we have the next iteration of that. So we do it every other year. And then in the intervening years, we do parents. So this coming year will be parents. So we'll be sharing that K-12 Insight student and staff survey data with you, and then we'll continue the conversation around technology in the August work session as well.
Great, okay. Just from a logistical, for the document that you have for, or that previews this, is there any way to link back to the this year's, just for like a historical connections of what topics, or is there any kind of historical list of what we do? I'm thinking of like three years from now, if a board wants to talk about technology, they can just do a quick search and they can see when we've talked about it.
We do have that one grid that has regular school board meetings on the left-hand side and work sessions on the right.
Okay.
Has the dates and then what we talked about in each of those meetings.
Perfect, that's, that works, that works great. Okay, great, okay. Questions about future agenda items, the August meetings? No, it seems like a long time away with our July recess coming up, so.
Unfortunately, it's not.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. Yeah, don't tell the students that. Okay, so that concludes the 3.03. And now we're going to move to closed. Is it possible, Dr. Noonan, to move to closed, but everybody is allowed to, right, they don't know, they can leave at this point, because there's no other?
Right.
Yeah.
You can go ahead and move to closed, and then we'll collect the microphones, we'll let everybody go, and then we'll go into closed.
Okay, so for the public that are watching, there are a number of people watching, we're going to move to closed, but unlike closed in the regular session, we are not going to come back to open. So this will conclude the public portion of the meeting. So thank you for hanging in there, and thank you, staff, appreciate it, yeah. All right, so we'll go move to closed, we're going to need a motion for 4.01, closed meeting. Jared?
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under Section 2.2-371181, in particular, the superintendent's evaluation.
Thank you, Jared, do I have a second? Thank you, Amy. All in favor, say yes. Any opposed, extensions? All right, we'll go ahead and move to closed, thanks, everybody.